Out to our city work meeting tonight for August 20th, 2020. To start out with, tradition here, let's go around the dices here and see if any of the council members have any type of report they'd like to share with one another. Mr. Thomas?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Councilman Morris, do you have anything to report? Okay, Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Just a couple of things to report on. So the communities that cares, we had a work group meeting, Zoom meeting this past week, and we have received a 100,000 two-year grant from the state. They'll be breaking that up into a Northridge High Cone and a Leighton High Cone, run two different community groups out of that, and they have hired a full-time coordinator, which is really going to be helpful. And all our responsibility was is the $5,000 that we initially agreed to, so it isn't going to affect us financially to get this going. And then on our youth council, they have spent their summer volunteering up at Open Doors. They've been doing all their landscaping needs up there, as well as helping inside with food orders, and they're getting ready to gear up for the new year and had a conversation with them that these kids were, the night before they were supposed to go to their youth council conference in March is the night that everything was pulled, the rug was pulled out from all of us. And so the way they're going to handle interviews, instead of opening them up, she's going to give these, have these kids write an essay as to why they want to stay on board and do another year, and I think that's fair, that they really didn't get a year to do anything, and we really haven't had a chance to do any training with these kids. And so we may get a few new youth council kids, but a lot of them are probably going to stay on, and they've been great at volunteering their time.
They have, and they've been great about being very adaptable, knowing how they've handled this whole situation, so I appreciate the youth. Councilman Bloxton, do you have anything? Councilman Thomas? Or, excuse me, I'm used to calling you Thomas, Tom Day. Just don't call you late for dinner, right? Okay, well, that wraps up any of the reports. I'm going to exercise my mayor's report at this time and actually turn my time over to Tracy Probert and have him give us an update.
Mayor, members of the council, we're able to receive sales tax data just today, and so Mr. Jensen asked that I come tonight and present just this information to you. I've handed it out so that you can review it. This first sheet, if we look at, and what it does is it completes our fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2020, so we now have our June numbers in, and they came in very, very good, ahead of what we anticipated, especially ahead of what we thought might occur, you know, three months ago when we first started being concerned, or four months ago, however long it's been, back in February. You can see in the first two columns, that's 2019 actual compared to 2020 actual, overall up 879,500, five and a half percent year over year. That was better than I would have anticipated in a normal year without COVID. We were on a trend over the last three or four years where we were up about eight percent, and then we were up maybe six, and then four, and so this is actually, I kind of anticipated that that trend year over year would keep going down, but as you can see, it's turned itself around. If you look at the other two columns on the right-hand side, budget to actual for the year, you could see the first few months of the fiscal year were about what I would have anticipated. We were up the first month, down the next two, up the fourth month, and we budgeted that way intentionally. We went a little bit aggressive on the sales tax budget when we set it up in 2020, and so it was starting out that way. You could see that the February number was down, which, you know, we'd kind of anticipated started the COVID stuff, and April was down, March was kind of saved by the, you know, run on the grocery stores and Sam's Club and Walmart and all that, buying all toilet paper. But all joking aside, when we come back to May and June, we end up $330,000 ahead of budget, which is fantastic, especially in the, you know, given the situation and everything that people had said, I think that puts us in a great position, up two percent over budget. If we look at the second paper that I've given you, it compares April, May, and June sales, and, you know, our car dealerships have done phenomenal. I think our only concern at this point is they run out of cars to sell, but, you know, they're, they're way ahead of where they would normally be. Our major retailers have stayed consistent throughout all this. Our restaurants, you'll notice in April, were down quite a bit. If I had March on here, they would have been down even lower than that in March, but you can see that they've rebounded back up, and that 55,000 in the month of June would be a, you know, that's a reasonable amount. It's not our highest, but it's a, you know, it's a reasonable amount, just depending on how people are attending restaurants. The mall, way down in April, you can see that the stores there have rebounded, that's back up to a reasonable amount. Home improvement is just kind of seasonal. In reality, April was a lot higher than it should have been, and so was March. So this number in June, even though it's lower than May, that's actually reasonable. People go out in April, May, June, you know, April and May and buy all of their, their stuff, their plants, their gardens, their, their things, and June starts to slow down, June, July, August. Your grocers, again, April was high and May is more reasonable. Our fast food, back up to a normal level. Gas stations, that one seems kind of strange, but April was actually a high month. I don't know if everybody tried to escape or what, but June is actually a more reasonable number. And then our online, down at the bottom there, that's, you know, that's just about what it should be. So all in all, my interpretation of this is that we've rebounded back in a lot of areas that were down. I think when I skipped was maybe department stores. Yeah, you could see that that was down at 51,000 in April, now back, back up to 84,000, which is a reasonable amount for that. On this last slide that I've given you, this will compare June of 18 to June of 19 to June of 20. June is a quarter reporting month, and so naturally, it's already a little bit higher than April and May because all of your small businesses are required to report just quarterly instead of monthly, so we get a, we get a spike every quarter. So this will compare those so that you can look at it, but again, like I pointed, well, our online, the second line down, you could see that we weren't reporting really anything. We were receiving some in 18, but we weren't really tracking it, but you can see that that's been a significant increase over the three-year period. Car dealerships up significantly if you compare it to the two prior years. And then you can see how I've said that, you know, restaurants are at a more reasonable level, a little bit low, but more reasonable, the mall at a reasonable level, and I, and I don't know that you want me to go through every single one of them, but it'll give you a, a reference of, you know, being able to look at June of 2020 and say, okay, yeah, that is, that is comparable to June of 19 and June of 18, and so we're on track with where we need to be revenue-wise. I don't know if, if you'd like any more explanation than that, or if you have any questions?
I've got a question, Tracy. Thank you for putting this together. The, on the second sheet, we have, the, the second line is major retailers, and then down in 17, you have other major retail. What's the, what's that category, the other major retail?
I probably shouldn't call it major, now that you've pointed that out. It's just other retailers. So we have our large, big-box retailers around town that bring in a lot of revenue, and then you have all the others, and, you know, there's, I don't even know how many. I mean, I dare say 1,000, you know, and so, and they all bring in small amounts. They're significant for us. They, you know, they obviously contribute and help a lot, and they're great to have in the community, but it's hard to break them out and segregate them, so that's what that is.
Tracy, I didn't get a copy. I was just wondering if you could give me one.
Okay, I'll give you one. I have an extra over here, so that's okay.
Counsel, does anyone else have any questions regarding our report here?
Thank you, Tracy.
It's good news, we appreciate it.
It's happy to see.
Always have our reports.
Yeah. Nice to be the bearer of good news, you know?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to our presentations. Our first one up, Lon's going to, is going to present to us on just our development of the website, the economic development website, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. We are super excited to be presenting to you the economic development website that we have been working on for quite some time. Conversations for this started probably two years ago or more, about a year ago. Morgan and I, we were given a green light, and we started a process where we researched several economic development websites across the country and, and developed an RFP, which we sent out the first of the year. That was answered in February, and we selected a company from Leighton called Fourth Gear. Brent Hart from Fourth Gear is in the audience, in case there's questions that we can't answer. This has been a really good process. Part of the requirements that we requested was that we could edit this website in-house, and it's been developed so Morgan and I can edit everything on this website. We can add whatever data, update whatever data we need to, which is great, change pictures, add graphs, et cetera. The current website, it's not super welcoming. We have some PDFs and a little bit of, a little bit of text, but it's real bland. We wanted something that would make people want to be, or want to look further at Leighton and to find out the information they need. So this is the homepage. This is the picture at the top. As you scroll down, you'll see a few things. Up to the right, you can see there's something called the News Bulletin. There's also a page under the title up here. It's the same thing, News Bulletin. That's where we can place articles or news, for instance. This one shows the groundbreaking for RC Willys, and it talks about RC Willys. And so that's great to have. The request for that really came from COVID and everything we're doing right now, so we can make announcements to whoever's, who's ever's on the website. As you scroll down, you can see there's some great information. We included statistics that are important to employers or people that are looking to Leighton to move. And see, when you scroll over these, it gives you some data, it'll send you to those pages. In the middle of here is a map, which we saw on several sites. Not everybody knows where Utah is, for that matter, but Leighton, it shows where we are in comparison to Salt Lake and the airport. Everybody seems to know those two things. We provide data on where we are currently, which is, is something that they're looking for. There's a few sections of the website where we include data on Hitler Four Space and their importance to the community. As you keep scrolling down, you can see that there's different segments also that people can review by clicking on here, and there's other ways to find them as they go through the, the website. There's a lot of information in here, a lot of it is the information that, like I said, employers and employees are looking for when they're thinking about moving to a different location. So under here, I'll just show you a few highlights. We'll start with the picture of the mayor and basically a paragraph welcoming people to the city.
In address.
Yes. Right here, we have an article that was put out by a magazine company about Leighton City, which is great, gives us, gives more information. In the middle here, this is the next, an explanation of why we think they should come to Leighton. We try to, not only do we have links, for instance, if you click on this, it'll send you to key industries. We have a lot of links throughout the website to pretty much everything that we could think of to help people find their way through and navigate the information that they're looking for. You can scroll down here, you can see that as well. It's really easy to spend a lot of time in here, so I'm going to keep track of my little list here to make sure I don't do that. We have a section of business testimonials where we've had companies, Jackie, Kiamak, and others that have given testimonials of doing business with the city, which is important for people that are considering our, our community. We have the calendar of events. We set this up for Morgan's Small Business Seminar to provide information to the people that are interested in signing up for that, which is very popular. Obviously, it's been on hold with COVID, but people are excited about that. Then I also included links to pretty much every calendar in Northern, in Davis County, which is helpful for people as well. And then another page that's very useful is, we have one called Maps and Information. This link right here will take you to EDC Utah's real estate page. They can find property that's for sale currently. Here we have maps, one that I put together when I first started because my Google sent me across the street to the east when I typed in the city's address, is a map that shows you how to get to City Hall. But then we have all these others, which is East Gate, the EDA, the RDA, our opportunity zone, information as far as like the general plan, our master plans. So there's a lot of data in here that people can use. We're excited about it. As you move across here, we have a page called Economic Overview, and this gives a general, general information regarding our current status. These are our reports that we put out, well, we put out a year ago, that we'll be updating, but this gives more information, like I said.
Can we make a recommendation on that page? Your yellow type, you cannot see.
The what?
Your first line of photos, and then you've got yellow type underneath there. Your titles, you can't even read them.
Oh, on the back of the, yeah, okay, I'll change the color of that background, that'll help. That's hard to see. Moving on, we have demographics, everybody's interested in those. Each of those are linked to the source, so if you click on here, it'll take you to the census page with information about Leighton, and every, each one of these have the same situation, they go to the, the source of the data. And also, everything that, that has a link will send you to a separate page, so you don't have to worry about going back to this, to find the city's website, which is helpful. Again, we try to make this as easy to navigate as possible. Another one would be the city incentives. This page, we have the data that we, we want to provide to those who are interested. We also explain tax increment on this page. We have some graphics. We have the report, the annual reporting here as well for the RDA. So it's just a lot of information, again, that people are interested in, they need to know. And on top of that, we have a page that shows the quality of life in Leighton. For instance, here's our recreation page. If you click on any of these, it'll bring you down the page to where those are located. And then we have a similar page for each of these items, education, healthcare, housing, entertainment, and retail. And then we have some information about us as well, which explains the city government, a little bit of our history is under here as well. So we had a lot of fun putting this together. It was a lot of work. Morgan did a great job. Fourth Gear was great to work with, and we're excited to have this launched. We think it'll be very helpful for a lot of people looking to Leighton for information. We'll be able to direct a lot of people to this website to get the, the information they're looking for, for a whole variety of reasons, aside from economic development, but we're excited.
I'm excited, this is good information here. Very good.
Take some time to browse.
Like you got some comments here, so go ahead and start, you guys.
Go back to first page, will you? The, whatever you call it, the first page.
The homepage, the landing page?
Homepage. Is that the homepage? Where's the one that had the bulletin? There it is, right there. See, you can put anything you want there, right?
Anything related to economic development, preferably, yes.
What's that?
Yes, is the answer. We can put, we can put whatever report we want there.
Report?
Well, I mean, if we have a groundbreaking, or a ribbon cutting, or we have some sort of development.
Anything we want to put there, we can.
Correct.
Okay, that's fine. We won't make it bad. Maybe.
Lon, my, my question's, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
My, my question's about the demographics, which is a big, a big deal for businesses and retailers as they look at where they want to invest and, and the cities they want to come to. My, my question is on the household income, and that's, that's linked to the census. Just wondering, over time, has that, I'm assuming that's gone up. What, what, what do you think the projection's going to be in the next four or five years as we, because this is great, you're going to bring people, and you're looking at that number going, well, that's from 2018, and we're 2020, and looking at 21, and is there a, a projection that, that you offer when, when, when they come calling, or how does, or maybe that's a question we can talk about later?
I actually haven't been asked that question, and I haven't had to, I haven't been able to put it together, but I can. We've gone up, if I can do some super fast math, probably 4% over the last five years, and I think it, it probably streamlines along there, but I don't have that number exactly, so I can find that and give it to you. I just haven't been asked that question as far as projection.
Okay, I just, we're, we're not, we're, as far as the county goes, we're down the list.
There's a lot of jobs coming to the area that will raise that income.
And we're growing, and that's, that's the question, is you're like, hey, yeah, that might be the number, but look what's happening here, and here, and here.
Right.
And, and we're trying to make us more attractive with, the data lags.
Yes.
And to...
It always does anyway, as you may know, the federal government always reports for the prior year. You're at least a year behind with their data. It's really hard to find data that's more current than that, that's accurate, but...
Very detailed, which, you're spot on, that's what people want to see, and they want to be able to just go to one area and look it all up, and it'd be simple with the two or three clicks. So, nice job for the developer there.
I have a question. So how does this interface with our leightoncity.org website? Is, when you go to economic development, does it trigger you to this page?
We haven't done that yet, but that's probably what we plan on doing. We, we've, have to verify that we've replaced all the data on our site before we do that, but that's the goal, is that we would link it to here, so if they click on economic development, it would take it to, take them to our site.
Okay.
Thanks, Lon. Appreciate all this information. When a business comes in, kind of sniffing around, wants to see if they want to relocate, and they have discussions about incentives, in the past, have they just called you?
Correct.
And here you can put...
They'll call me, or the state. Correct.
And, but you've put these, the incentives actually on here as well, so is there anything that, that isn't on this that you would be able to share with them in additional conversations? Or can they get pretty much anything they want on the website?
No, they can get most of the information there, whether the council, if the city wants to provide a different incentive for a certain employer, that's obviously not going to be on here, that'll be negotiated, so those, that's probably the one thing that's not on here. We've tried to put everything else on here.
Yeah, because I just think it would be nice if I was looking around and seeing Leighton, or Kay'sville, or whatever, and I could see all, mostly the information in front of me. I mean, that makes it easier for them because you make their job easier, because they don't have to make a second call, they can just peruse the website. So, just talking with Tom, I mean, this is kind of what, honestly, what I would hope the rest of the Leighton City website would look like. So I don't know if we put out another RFP and come fix the website for us, because it's something that we've had, we've had a lot of people maybe not even go on it because of that. So, good job, great job, and it looks really good. Looks nice, easy, crisp, it's not too much words, I mean, it's just, has all the information on it, so just kudos to you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I only have one other little, small comment, and it's minimal, but it's the graphic artist in me, right? I kept noticing the train picture, and to me, Leighton's more than just the train stop, so I, if we could find a little bit, some other photos, so that's not so repetitive on the site, and I just picked up on it as, because this is obviously the first time all of us seen this, so I'd like to kind of see a few more pictures of the city.
I guess if we're, if we're saying what we would add to it, I, I would like to see more emphasis on utopia, just being like powered by utopia or something like that, because I saw in Wall Street Journal the day, just the number of internet usage is just through the roof, right? And I saw it on one of the dropdowns, which is great, but if...
Yeah, we've been through it throughout the site.
Yeah, and if you're only on there for maybe a minute, I would, I would like to hope that the investment the city's put in utopia and that we have broadband, you know, gigabit internet all throughout the city makes us, that's a differentiator between us and Kay'sville, who are trying to put it on the ballot, right? So I'd rather have the business come to, to Leighton and not have to look for the utopia, but it should be on the main page, that we're, we're ready for a diverse, you know, work-at-home, pandemic-style economic future, and we don't have to build it out, it's already done.
Right.
So, that would just be my, my one.
We try to, I think we mentioned that on almost every page, maybe, maybe one in the whole entire site, so it, we know it's important for sure.
Make sure you get it on that one.
So Lon, when do you think it's going to be launched and up and fully running?
Uh, right now.
So it is now?
Yes.
Okay.
We turned it on right before the meeting, so it's ready to go.
What's the slide? I'm sorry.
Leighton econ.org, O-R-G, so E-C-O-N dot O-R-G.
Thanks, Lon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anything else on this topic? Very good, we appreciate it. Okay, so we'll move on to our third item of business then, and Chad Wilkinson's going to present to us regarding the proposed amendment to Leighton Municipal Code Title 19 on the zoning for our mobile home parks and trailer vehicles.
Thanks. This is a, this is a continuation of our discussion on the comprehensive change to our parking ordinance. We've had a little bit of a technical glitch with our broadcast, so we're going to try to fix that right now. We're going to try to do a little bit of a login, but I'll give a little bit of a preamble before that, if that's okay, Mayor. Mayor and Council, last week, or two weeks ago, Tim presented to you kind of an overview of some of the reasons why we're looking to revise our parking, our parking ordinance. Just to recap very briefly on that, over the last year or so, we've, we've looked at, we've had some, some personnel changes, and we've looked at some things that could be done to bring our parking code up to date. We found that there are some issues in trying to issue business licenses with outdated parking standards. One that's a great example of this would be our salon rate for hair salons. That, for whatever reason, we're out of step with what that parking rate is, so we've had a lot of these that have come in, and the parking requirement is so high and really doesn't reflect what current parking ordinances and parking sta, parking studies have shown for those uses. So that's one where we've consistently battled with, with property owners to say, we don't think you have enough parking. They've come back and say, no, we've got plenty of parking. We've tended to agree with them on that particular question, but it's just been a code issue. So that's one example, but there's many examples of that. Office is another one where kind of the one-size-fits-all office approach, we found not to be accurate with today's more differentiated types of office uses. So that's another area that we've looked at very closely. We've looked at the, the rates based on a, a... We've looked at the, the rates based on a few different sources. One, as we always do, we've compared with other municipalities throughout Utah comparable municipalities. We've also gone to the international transportation, or excuse me, Institute of Transportation Engineers manual. They put out a parking manual that's updated every three or four years. It's actually a group that goes out and looks at different sized cities, different demographics. They look at the, the rates for various uses that could be office, recreational, multifamily, single family, all the different parking needs or parking uses. And they come up with numbers that reflect all those studies. Some, some uses have more studies, some have less. We try to stay away from those that have had fewer studies, but those that have had robust numbers of studies where you've done multiple, multiple studies. We've looked at those numbers to see if our code is in line with those numbers. So bottom line, at the end of the day, with, with each of those studies, we've come up with some parking standards that, that look at each of these uses, provide additional clarity where needed. And hopefully that will help us to right-size those parking standards. In addition to, to that issue, we've also had some conversations about making sure the dimensions of our parking spaces are in keeping with, with what we see again in other communities and also just what makes sense. From, from the standpoint of what we, we actually see out there in the, in the field. We've looked at several different cities on that issue. We've also looked at the, just outside our front door to see what we've got out here and see how well that's working. Um, so that's reflective of the, of the types of types of dimensions you're going to see in this new ordinance. I want to get into this. We're, we're just, again, we had a little technical glitch. We're trying to fix right now. In terms of maybe starting off with talking about our multifamily standards, one of the things that we found with our multifamily uses is that we had a lot of developers coming in and telling us, hey, we've, we've had parking studies done. We've had professionals, professionals that we trust, quite frankly, tell us that your, your parking rates are just a little higher than what they, they ought to be. So we looked at that and said, we want to find out for ourselves what, what that's like in Leighton. We had a golden opportunity with a, a local intern that needed some intern hours and that was willing to go out and do some parking counts for us. The parking counts were done, really starting when the pandemic shutdown began. So we felt like that was a pretty good reflection of who was actually at those apartment buildings during the day. But he didn't just look at those parking, those areas during the day. He looked at it at multiple hours of the day. So middle of the day, late at night. In fact, we had to kind of pull him back a little bit and say, don't go too, too late at night, too early in the morning. We don't want to be a an imposition on those uses there. But he looked at various times of day and, and came up with some numbers that we're going to present to you in, here in just a moment. It looks like we're back up. So just really briefly, not to go back too much, but again, the, the idea is to apply best practices and standards, right-size those parking dimensions ratios, improve the consistency. Tim went through a lot of this information last week. One other thing that we just wanted to hit on, hit on is that this is part of your general plan that we've hit our, almost hit our one year anniversary on the adoption of the general plan. And one of those strategies in the general plan was to explore and monitor parking demand trends, shared parking, alternative transportation strategies to support parking reductions, reductions in support of low and moderate income housing development. So that was one of the goals and policies of the, of the general plan. Don't want to go too much into those. We want to get into the meat. Today is about the meat. We talked about the background last, last time. Today we want to get into the meat of the ordinance. So I want to talk a little bit about, first of all, I want to turn just a brief moment over to Tim to talk about these numbers. Again, these were numbers that were put together by an intern that was tasked with counting some of these developments in Leighton City and seeing where our actual numbers lie. So I'm going to just turn a brief moment over to Tim.
Thanks, Chad. Good to see you again, Mayor and Council members. So this is a summary of the many different visits that were made by our intern and in fact, one of our staff members as well, Zach Caden, contributed to these councils. Uh, we also received some reports from a couple of apartment communities outside of Leighton. And so what we did is we averaged them together, first of all, to find out what is the average peak demand for parking in multifamily communities? And that peak demand is actually the lowest vacancy count of all hours that were counted, different days of the week. And we found that typically a Sunday evening or a Monday morning, or a typically a weeknight, weekend evening or early morning was when the highest parking demand or the lowest parking counts were, were made. And if we look at that demand that the peak parking use in the left column and then the peak parking vacancy or the lowest parking counts, we found that there's an average of 21% vacancy or under utilization of these spaces. And, but rather than go by an average, we felt that it would be safest to look at the the highest number in terms of the, the demand. Rather than go with an average or the low, we go with the high, highest parking demand. Which is reflected here, the seasons of Leighton, which is above the 1.58 average parking demand. This twin tree is actually predominantly three bedroom community. And so even though that number is higher than our 1.76, that's an outlier because it's a three bedroom, predominantly three bedroom apartment community. And so if we look at per bedroom, they're actually lower where this is the highest per bedroom as for the seasons of Leighton. So uh, we have looked also and considered the apartment vacancies and made adjustments for empty units. Overall, very high occupancy of the, of the apartments, just under 4% total average vacancy. And so with this is the average for a two bedroom. This 1.76, we feel that 1.75 is an appropriate two bedroom. Parking standard ratio, 1.4 for the one bedroom and 1.9 for a three bedroom. That's helpful, some.
So as we go through these parking standards, I wanted to show kind of the basis of our recommendation. Again, this is not the, this is not the average. This is actually the highest. If you look at both those numbers, 1.76 and 0.91. Uh, you've got a lower number here on this case crossing for the per unit, but a little bit higher per bedroom. So we tried to get the one that had that, the highest numbers in both of those categories. And that's, that's the number that we settled on. Again, this one, the 1.88 really does, it's, it's an outlier, three bedroom units predominantly. That's reflected in our three bedroom unit rate. So you'll see that as I go through the standards here in just a minute. There's the standards that we've, we've proposed to you. Studio remains pretty much the same. One bedroom has not changed as, as too much as well. The two bedroom is where you first see those changes. The current rate would require for a two bedroom unit, 2.25, did I get that right, guys? For that two bedroom, current two bedroom? Okay, 2.25. So this new rate would be 1.75, takes it down just a little bit. Three bedroom again, did come down as well to 1.9. I want to make sure that it's clear that these are rates for apartments for multifamily, not for single family homes. So there's, we still have the same single family dwelling unit standards have remained exactly where they're at today. And also townhomes. As we looked at townhomes, we found that those actually do have a higher parking demand. So we want to, you know, try to be as, as consistent as we can on that. So we're not proposing to make any real reductions there either. Because there is a higher demand for those types of units, a higher parking demand, that is to say. So that, that's just to start out with, that's the first kind of substantial modification that we've made. As you look at the use table, we've given you a copy of that proposed ordinance. There are other changes to offices, to retail, some types of retail. And again, that's based on looking at very closely that Institute of Transportation Engineers manual. The idea behind these changes always, as we say, is, you know, especially with the business parking, we want to have, if we can provide more land for business, that uses up less land, right? We're trying to to more effectively use our land. It preserves the land that hasn't been developed for a longer period of time. There's less heat reflection, better community aesthetic. If we have less parking, less waste, more site development ability. This is target parking lot in December. This is a good example of a place where it's underutilized. You could, you can see where that could, additional space could be utilized. And that means we are taking up less space somewhere else and, and, and already, you know, utilizing space that's already been paved and already been developed. So that's an interesting thing to us is to see that even in December, that's, that's, you know, right during the height of your Christmas season, that's what it looks like out there. So uh, there's some availability there. We want to talk about today specifically some other strategies for right sizing parking. Not only do dimensions right size parking, but the amount of parking is important to make sure we're getting that that ratio just, just perfect and making sure we're effectively using the land. So these are five techniques, five tools that we've got in this toolbox. We've got the little picture of the toolbox over there that we are going to propose to you to help right-size the parking as we have new developments come in. The first one is shared parking. This is available in some form right now in our code. Shared parking is really about offsite. It's about uh, two different uses, two different ownerships, two different places that, that want to share their parking together. In this case, again, we're not talking about single family attached or detached. So we're not talking about townhome developments. We are proposing that multifamily could have some shared parking. However, they'd still have to provide at least one space per unit on their property. And have that space be covered and enclosed. Uh, the chart that's over here on the side, what we look at is, you know, peak parking demand for those two uses. We're going to look at what, what types of uses are on the different properties, whether it's residential, shopping center, school, whatever it is. And look at when the peak parking demand occurs for those different uses. If an office, that's a perfect example. If an office has a peak parking of eight to five and residential has a peak parking from six to six, which is what we've observed. Then you can share some of that parking and again, take up less space with those parking spaces because those two uses are not parking at the same time. So that's, that's an example of one of those tools is the shared parking.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir. I saw you going for it, so I waited for just a second.
I, I gotta remember as it's on the screen or I'll forget. As I, as I read through the ordinance, that 500 foot came up a couple of different times.
Yeah.
To me, that seems kind of far. Is that an average by your, your studies and stuff?
Yeah, 500, 500 is pretty standard. The, the distance that, that studies have shown people are willing to lock is actually a little bit more than that. Especially in a residential setting. It's closer to quarter of a mile is where people, that's kind of that sweet spot, you know, about a thousand feet, quarter of a mile is a little bit more than that, about 1,300 feet. But this, this 500 foot's a pretty, yeah, pretty standard.
Pretty standard number.
Pretty standard distance. Yeah. And we could, I don't have those maps with you, but next meeting, we could show you what, what that means. It's, it's closer than you may think. Sometimes when you look at these block diagrams, it looks like it's a longer distance away. But on some of these large developments like that target development, 500 feet puts you out there. You know, toward the end of that parking lot. So it's not, it's not as far as what you may think. But Brandon's taking a note right now. I see we, we'll come back with an exhibit that shows.
I was just curious where that number is at. Cause it, to me, it seems if it's the outside of the parking lot at Target, I don't park out there and walk here. I'd park close.
And Tim, this map is from
You gotta have a new car to park way out there.
I don't have a new car. I was just curious about the numbers that was.
Oh, Davis, California. Okay, thank you. Um, I couldn't quite see the street names myself up there, but we'll, we'll come with some examples of how far that is. But 500 feet. Yeah. If you look at ordinances from other communities, that's, that's pretty standard. Also, you know, for, for a small block, that's going to be, you know, in Utah, we have larger blocks, but in those small, smaller block cities, that's pretty consistent with your, your block perimeter. So it's, it's about a, a block perimeter away. So a little bit closer than you may think.
How wide is the stall normally?
Parking stall? Nine feet?
Nine?
Uh huh. Yes, Don.
On the shared. So what if the 500 feet is across the street, a busy street? I mean, do you, do the parameters have to be that it's a safe 500 feet away?
Let me, you guys have that ordinance pulled up? We'll get the ordinance pulled up for you and read with the languages. Typically, it, it's just within 500 feet, not, not necessarily walking distance of 500 feet. Um, on most ordinances that we've seen. We got to borrow the mouse.
Seems like it said something like straight line, walking distance or something in the ordinance.
Yeah. So I mean, we would, we would want to, as we look at these shared parking agreements, though, we'd want to make sure that it was someplace that, you know, 500 feet away that takes 2,000 feet to get to, that's not going to work. So we'd want to make sure that we look very closely.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, do you want them crossing a busy road?
Yeah, yeah. But on the other hand, if there's, if there's ways to do it safely, 500 feet is, is a reasonable amount of distance to walk. So I think, you know, in some instances, you might have it across a busy street, but you might have, I'm, I'm thinking predominantly of Main Street opportunities as we look at redevelopment of some of those sites. We're also looking at some development of crosswalks and other devices that would provide for safe passage across there. So certainly if it's a place where, you know, as an example, if it's across you know, highway 89 or something, that's now a freeway and it's 500 feet as, as the crow flies, but not, you can't get there by, without walking a mile, we're going to say that's not shared parking to the, to the developers. So what's that, Tim? I didn't hear you? Okay.
Well, I even, I even worry about like Main Street. I mean.
Page three under K. We'll just go there really quick.
And while you're looking that up, the other question on the shared parking they have is, and it brings to mind the studios we just did next to the Buddhist temple. So down the road, the Buddhists decide to leave and now we have a really prime piece of property that could be used for commercial development or something. And they don't want a shared parking. Then what does that do to the people who, I mean, if these contracts, do they follow the land and the new owners have to abide by any shared contract? So that could potentially, in the case of like the Buddhist monk thing, if they were to leave and, and a really good business comes to town or possibly wants to come to town. And we say, well, if you don't accept the shared parking, you can't build there. Are we jeopardizing some opportunities for growth by doing this?
Um, they, they, we would require a perpetual easement for that parking from, in that shared parking scenario. So I don't, I don't foresee that as being a, a big issue with the, with that Buddhist temple. We actually ended up not sharing the parking. They decided they weren't willing to, to do that. So there'll be some reductions there in the number of units. But to your point, yeah, that business would have to provide that shared parking in perpetuity. And I think that's part of that initial analysis. We've got to make sure that they've got that additional parking available. You know, it's hard to anticipate every future scenario, but I, I don't see that as being a big impediment to, to future development of those sites. If we start to get, you know, someone that's sharing, I think besides the limit on the distance, there's also a limit on the amount of parking that can be shared. In other words, that person can't share all of their parking. They have to still have a, a minimum amount of parking that's available to them. So I think that's also going to help that. Just to answer the other question on the 500 feet. Um, it is the 500 feet's the shortest available pedestrian route of access. So that's going to make it so that it is within that walking distance, not within, you know, within 500 feet is the crow flies, but 2,000 feet is the person walks. So any other questions on the shared before we go to that next tool? I want to try to talk about as many of these tools as we can and give some time for, for the chief to talk about his, his item tonight as well. And we can come back to some of these as well. The other, the next tool in our toolbox that we're proposing is joint use parking. Now joint use parking would be something that would really apply on the same site. So this is shared parking would be two neighbors that want to share with each other. Joint use is one development, one parcel in some cases, in some cases would be common ownership of several parcels. But this is again, something that wouldn't apply to single family. Again, if it's multifamily, you'd have to have at least one covered enclosed space within 500 feet. What this does is it gives a calculation that allows for time of day analysis. And it's, it's a little bit short of requiring a parking study. It's, it's rates that have been vetted by, by parking engineers and look at those rates as across the board and say, this is what we anticipate your peak parking rate is going to be for these various uses. So these are again, retail at, from 6:00 AM to 8:05. This is the factor of adjustment that you use, this point zero five factor. You can go through that table and see each of those. And it, you know, if you look at multifamily, for example, their, their one factor occurs from 12 to six in the morning, which makes perfect sense. That's when most people are parked there and sleeping. And then still you've, you've, even though 6:00 AM it starts to go down, you've still got a high factor there. Again, letting you know that until about 8:00 AM, you're, you're still going to have quite a few people parked in those parking spots. Using that table and using an example of some square footage that you could plug into there. The way that joint use works is that rather than taking the sum of each of those individual uses, if you look at each of these individual proposed uses, 50,000 square feet of office, 20,000 of retail, 8,000 of restaurant, 150 dwelling units. If you add all those separate individual parking demand up, it comes up at 673. If you plug those uses into the little calculator here, you come up with a peak demand of 499. If you plug those uses into the little calculator here, you come up with a peak demand of 499. That's saying at each of those times, you know, using the very highest rate that you can anticipate when people are going to be there, all those different uses, it's going to be around 500 spaces. That means that that becomes your, your parking requirement. So you're not going with the lowest. It's not an average. It's the highest using those calculations, those reduction factors. That allows people again, to have an opportunity for a reasonable reduction in the parking standards based on some joint use of their parking. Any questions on that before I move on to the next tool? And the real idea behind this again, is to give people, a lot of times what we hear is, hey, we know just because of what we do, we know that there's going to be some overlapping parking with our uses. We're a developer. We've done this for a while. Do we really need to have the expense of going through a parking engineer to say that this is what's going to happen? In this case, what we're saying is these are rates that have been vetted. We know these work. If you can come up with a parking calculation, we're going to go with the very highest one, but that allows you to get a reasonable reduction rather than requiring the sum of all those uses.
But Chad, I know that you're moving a lot of your operations online so that any of the developers can access. Would this table then be on there to where they can do their own calculations?
Yeah, yeah. We'd have that available for them to plug those numbers in. And we haven't talked about an interactive one yet, but you know, that table is in the code, this table right here. So they can take those numbers and plug them into a, their own calculator. The example will be in the code though.
So then that, this is what I'm talking about, this one here is.
This example will be there for them to use and look at.
Basically the parking calculator that they just plug them in and it automatically calculates it for them.
Yeah, it's a good idea. I don't, I don't see there would be a, shouldn't be something that would be very difficult. I'm looking at my guys to make sure I'm not giving them too much extra work, but yeah. So I think that's something we can.
Document, so it should be easy for them to adapt.
I think that's, that's not a bad thing. We'd, we'd want to make sure that it's produced by us so we can trust the, the calc's on there. But okay, any other questions on that one before I move on to the next one? So the next tool in the toolbox is just a administrative parking reduction. As a zoning administrator, what the proposal is that there could be a 10% parking reduction if one of these two scenarios applies, either that they provide us with a, a parking demand analysis prepared by a licensed traffic engineer, like a Hales Engineering, Farren Peers, one of these guys that we trust, that we know have good credentials and that, that have the, you know, the ability to look at these numbers. Or if they're within a quarter mile, quarter mile walk of mass transit. So that'd be an existing station, front runner, for example, or one of these other mass transit stations. If there was a future one, for example, if there was, could be a bus rapid transit line somewhere in the city and we had a station, they could potentially get that. And that's, that's an administrative reduction that would be available just by providing one of these analysis or being within a quarter mile. If we want, if they want to ask for a little bit of additional reduction, they would have to between 10 and 15%, that would have to be the land use authority. Sometimes that would be the zoning administrator in the case of permitted uses, but a lot of times it would be the planning commission that would review that. In that case, they'd have to provide one of these two top options, either the parking demand analysis and within a quarter mile, and then one of these two. And underneath this section, 2A, for example, there are five separate criteria that they, all of those would have to apply for them to get that reduction. Want to be clear about that. So if they choose 2A, then all those five have to be present. 2B again is to provide a little bit of an incentive for low to moderate income housing in appropriate areas. So that's a 10 to 15% reduction. And just to give you an idea on that joint use parking that we just had up there, that was around a 26% reduction. So that gives you an idea of the numbers. So the next number would be again, a 15 to 20% reduction would be available if they meet three of those. So two, either one of those and two of these, or two of these and one of these lower criteria. And then again, if you choose that 2A, it's going to be all five. And then that last one is you got to meet the whole thing. Everything's got to be present in order for that. And that's only granted by the land use authority. So that gets you back to that 20 to 25%. We talked about the joint use being around 26 in that example. You might be asking yourself, can they combine these? No, you can't do a joint use and then come back in and combine and say, now we want to do a administrative parking reduction. That's not how it works. We're not, we don't want that, you know, we don't want it to result in the 50% reduction in parking requirements based on this. So these tools can be used separately, but they're, they're meant to be a custom fit for a, a variety of just different scenarios. But this is one, this one especially where we have an existing mass transit station, we wanted to be able to provide a little bit of a reduction that, that acknowledges that if you're close to front runner, that there is, there is the need to reduce those parking standards just administratively. But it also has some other tools available. Any questions on that one? We have one other, two other, just parking, parking reduction tools available.
So yeah, one question, Chad. I mean, in the future, I imagine we'll have more bus through the city as well. That would apply as mass transit.
We actually very, very carefully defined what that means.
That just for a runner then?
It's, it's front runner or a, a bus rapid transit station would be another thing that would apply. So if you had, let's say that someday we have a, a bus rapid transit that connects our front runner station with Hill Air Force Base, along that, those, those are spaced apart, they're, they're actually a station. They're not a, a bus stop. So it's, it's a station we're talking about. So just like your 470 bus that goes up and down Main Street, that's not a station. Those are just bus stops. But if you had a, a bus rapid transit that had actual stations spaced further apart with more frequent arrivals and departures for these folks, they go, bus rapid transit, the idea is they go a little quicker. I'm getting too much detail. So it's not just your regular bus stop.
Okay.
Yep.
It's more than that.
It is. Yep. Any other questions on that one? And we can come back. Like I said, I want to, I'm just keeping my eye on the clock here. There's a parking exemption that we've, we've proposed for, just for our buildings in our historic downtown. This is something that comes up on these, really in, in almost every city that I've been in, when you have existing buildings in a downtown area, back in the day, they just didn't have as high a parking requirements for those buildings. And so you have some buildings that really rely on on-street parking. You can think of those places downtown that that's, that's really the only parking they have. So what we're saying is that this exemption would apply to existing buildings in our downtown. What that means is that if you have a new land use or a, a, a building continues to operate the way they are, we're not going to require any new parking unless there's some specific scenarios. If they, if they remove existing parking spaces, they've got to replace that someplace relocated within 500 feet, that main building entrance. If they have a, a building expansion of more than a thousand square feet or 25% of the gross floor area, they'd have to provide that new parking for the, for the building expansion area. And then again, if someone comes in and says, we want to put multifamily on top of this existing building, which could be pretty cool in some scenarios, they're going to have to provide some off-street parking for those multifamily residential units. So they've got, they've got to figure that part of it out. If, if they can't do that, then it's not going to be available for them to, to do that expansion. So that's just very specific on the map. It's our historic downtown, only really applies to existing buildings, existing uses, and very limited scenarios where they get that exemption. Does that make sense? And is there any questions that you might have about that tool? That's one of the more straightforward ones. This next one's a little bit, would probably require a little bit of explanation. That's performance parking. This is another tool that would be available to, to someone. Many times, as I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, we have developers that come in and say, we've got a parking study in hand. We just don't think that we need that many parking spaces based on what our professional engineer is telling us. This would give them the ability to enter into an agreement with the city that would allow them to present that alternative plan and have a probationary period where we monitor that parking rate to see if there are issues. So upfront, they'd have to provide us with a parking plan. We'd review that through the development review committee. We'd approve or deny their permit. We would require security in some form, cash bond, something that provides them with the ability to provide that parking should they need it. Or an offsite parking agreement with some other person within 500 feet like we talked about. So if, if someone else says, I've got the parking available, if this doesn't work out, they can, they can come park here. That, if that agreement's in place, we can approve that. There's a probationary period that runs for 18 months. During that time, we're going to staff would, would go out and take a look at the, the parking situation. We do some parking counts. We'd also respond to any complaints. If we had any situation where this was overflowing on an adjacent property owner, or there was complaints about the, the performance parking, then we would say this is not working out. This is not going to be approved for the future. They'd have to either provide that parking through that security that they posted and then, or, and/or provide that offsite parking in that area where they have the agreement. So that's a tool. I've actually used this tool in other communities. I will say that those that are willing to go through this process usually are pretty confident in their parking rates and they, they, because there's, there's a lot at risk for them as well to, to have to come back and, and create new parking spaces later on. So.
Doesn't that kind of create the egg and the chicken type thing? I mean, if they want to build a large building and cut down the parking, what do they do? I mean, the only thing they could do is go find somewhere else where they could park. So they, if there's not anywhere else, then they have to cut back their building.
So they'd have to show us upfront that they have that either security posted to build the parking?
No, I understand.
So I think you mean like a contingency on what the building looks like if this doesn't work, not just that they pay for it, but where it goes.
Usually they want to come in, they got X amount of land and they come in and they want X size building. And then in order to do that, they got to cut back on parking, right?
In this case, they're going to show us that they can provide that parking. So we're not.
No, I understand. And they're going to come and say, look, we can do, do that, but you're asking them to, if it doesn't work.
Build the parking.
And then, yeah, but what if there's nowhere to build it?
Well, upfront, they've got to show us that there's some way to build it.
Okay. So you're saying, you say no, can't do it.
If they don't have that area that can go.
Yeah, if you don't have an area where you can put extra parking.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's got to be in place.
As long as that's held too, you know, because once you've built it and.
That's right.
Sky's the only place you got, then it's.
Yep. So that, part of that parking plan is, is that contingency plan, right? They've got to show us, okay, not only, in the case of security, not only do you post security, but you show us where that extra parking is going to be built. Yeah. Maybe that, I think I understand your question now. So you gotta, you gotta be able to show us that there's a place for that parking to go.
So Chad, in your experience, have they had to do that or most of them?
The folks that I've dealt with, they, they were confident in their numbers and they had land that they could build on if they needed to. They were, I will say they were smaller operations. One of them that I worked with was a dentist that knew his clientele very well. And he said, your dental rate's too high for me. I don't need that much parking and I don't want to build that much parking. And we entered into this agreement and it was perfect. There was no need for parking.
Smaller stuff, not big developments?
It could be big, but that's the, the experience I've had were fairly small. Yeah, they were, they were smaller developments. But this, this could be something that could provide relief for a smaller development, development that could show they had enough parking.
So it goes back, I think, to, I think Dawn's initial question as well, but this parking development then has to transfer with the ownership. So should that dentist in your analogy sell, he can't sell to somebody that's going to have, you know, a lot of people coming in and out of there where a dentist didn't.
That's true. And that, and that can be one of the side effects of it.
Yeah.
It, it's not uncommon for us to tell someone you don't have enough parking though for use. So if, if, for example, if someone comes in and builds a strip mall and they programmed it at our just retail rate, and then they say, well, we want to build four restaurants there instead of four retail establishments. They're all high turnover restaurants. Our parking rate's much higher for those. In those cases, we'd have to say, sorry, you just don't, you don't have enough parking for that use and we wouldn't approve that license. So you know, that's, that's another way to look at it. I will say that this one, like I say, I've, I've worked with a couple in another community. This really is only someone that really is pretty confident in their numbers and, and knows kind of their clientele. And it does, and it does, you know, it does restrict future development to some extent.
Well, and I'm, I'm thinking as far as, you know, the ownership of the property. I mean, we don't want to inhibit anybody. I mean, if you own your property, you can sell, sell it to who you want, but you just got to make sure they meet the parameters. Yeah, they got to do their due diligence and really.
Yeah.
Is there a way to maybe flag that on the, I guess the, the plot plat that gets recorded? Or at least I, obviously we'd have it here at the city, but I'm wondering like.
Yeah, we would. This would be a recorded agreement. So there would be something on the, on the deed for the property that says this is, this is applicable to this property. So we'd have a recorded agreement.
Chad, related to what you just said about the high turnover restaurants and back to one of the first slides you showed, the target parking lot and, and potentially being able to save land somewhere else by putting.
Yeah.
Something in the back of that parking lot or will, when that happens, traffic patterns and traffic be part of that decision of allowing whatever business that's going to be? Cause I, cause I think you, you concentrate more and more into that small of a spot. Now you've got traffic issues all around, at least in that area specifically, but just generally, is that, that'd be part of the.
Yeah, I think in some cases, we'd still want to do not just parking analysis, but traffic analysis for those. Yeah. And, and we'd, we'd work closely with the city engineering department on that. I will say that sometimes you get complementary uses in there and they actually, somebody parks and can go do both, right? So sometimes that can cut down on, on that parking demand a little bit. But we would want to make sure we had, especially on those high parking and traffic demand uses, we're closely with Steve to make sure we're getting traffic studies and, and looking at that very closely. Any other questions on that before I move to a couple other subjects? And then I'm going to try to leave some time for the chief here. We've given you the ordinance. If you have other questions, as you review that, please feel free to contact us and we'd be happy to try to answer those questions. We are looking at bringing this back to the council for, for review again, and potentially approval on September 3rd. So you do have that draft parking ordinance in, in your hands. And this next slide talks about the dimensions. This was brought up by one of the counselors. We have in right sizing our dimensions, we are proposing that there be a reduction to our current standard. Right now it's nine by 20. As we've looked at other communities and even our parking lot out here in front of this building, we found that most places are nine by 18, including this parking lot right on from this building. So we found that in most cases that is adequate. One thing that's vitally important, we found in most, in most of the codes we've looked at is your maneuvering space. If you cut that down, then it can create problems. So we've kept the maneuvering space at 24. We've dropped that dimension from nine to 18 for our standard parking space length. We think that that's another thing that will help right size parking, give people a little more ability to design some of these larger sites and, and provide adequate parking there. We've also provided something we didn't have before, which is some guidance on how we measure diagonal parking and the maneuvering aisle for the diagonal parking. We've had some kind of rudimentary drawings in our code that didn't give these dimensions as, as clearly, but now we've provided that so that as designers look at putting their parking lot plans together, they know what we're looking for on dimensions. We've worked closely with our engineering department on coming up with these dimensions and we, we feel good about the numbers. Another thing to, to note, we, we have looked at, you know, we, we do have large vehicles, especially here in, in this part of the state. What we found though is that there are fewer than you think out there as we've, we've looked around and, and you know, some of us drive those larger vehicles, but as we looked around, even in our own parking lot, there's quite a few that, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is we want to park for that average car size, not for the, the very largest vehicle that's out there. And if you have that maneuvering aisle right sized, then that can give you a little bit of flexibility on some of those larger vehicles so they can still get around and, and maneuver. So that is all I was going to say about that unless there's questions about the, the parking dimensions. Okay. One thing that we've looked at is on some of these urban districts, we do want to give them the ability to even go a little bit smaller, have some percentage of compact spaces. We've kind of got a semi-compact and a compact, and these would be things that would apply in some of our higher density urban and town center districts. And then some of these mixed use corridors would be a little bit less of a percentage of, of compact spaces allowed. We do, remind me of the percentage right now, Brandon, of compact. Okay. So 20% in the commercial manufacturing currently. So we already have some provision for compact spaces. We're adjusting this a little bit for, again, just some of these urban districts where we would anticipate that, you know, we might have some, some additional ability to have some compact spaces there in those developments. Unless there's any questions there, I'll, I'll kind of finish up here. We've, we've.
I've got one quick question.
Yes.
What about taking into consideration any of these electric vehicles? Cause you know, usually is there any way, are you, you're not addressing that issue at all here, right?
Electric vehicles, Tim.
Tom's Tesla. We want to know if, what, what type of credit you're going to give him?
I like the sound of Tom's Tesla. That's a, that's a cool.
Just give him an extension cord.
It's a point well taken. I don't think we've really got any provision for those, but yeah, I know some codes do have actually requirements for some charging stations. Yeah.
Charging stations for, you've seen like farming stations.
Yeah, yeah. I, I've seen them, yeah, all around. Yeah, yeah. I've seen them, yeah, all around the county. I, we haven't really looked at that. If that's something the council would like us to bring back to you at the next round, we could, we could find out what other communities are doing.
I would think that would be helpful as we build, I'm thinking specifically Gordon and the West Davis Business Center. I think those are two places that I think you might see more of a need for.
And I've seen it done two ways. One is that there's a minimum number or a percentage of those charging stations required, or there's a parking reduction available for someone that provides a charging station. So it becomes an incentive.
That's why I figured I better bring that up should there be, since you're addressing everything else, we might as well include that because, you know, we're already there with the future on that.
Yeah. Good. Yeah. We'll, we'll bring that back to you for sure. Okay. Just a couple of other things. We've looked at garage dimensions for multifamily in particular and, and we're going to propose some minimum dimensions for those. And these are for single spaces. So, you know, don't, don't panic when you see 10 feet. That, that's for a single space, not for a double. And then there's some additional standards that apply when there's doubles and triples in those, in those parking spaces. So again, just looking at right sizing that for those multifamily developments. We will be proposing or have proposed bike parking, minimum bike parking standards. One thing to keep in mind when we look at those bike parking spaces as you're reviewing the code is that bike parking dimensions are small. So when we talk about a number of spaces, you're talking about a smaller dimension parking space there. So that's just something to keep in mind. You can fit a lot of bike parking into a small space. Those are those standards. Didn't, didn't plan to talk too much about that tonight unless you'd like to. We've, we've updated our stacking spaces depending on the use. I told the guys we needed to have a separate use right here that says Chick-fil-A that has 30 stacking spaces, but we, we don't have that in there. But.
But they're fast.
What's that?
They're fast.
They are fast. So this, this gives some stacking spaces for things like banks and automatic teller machines. Still have some pretty high stacking spaces required for drive-through restaurant.
Chad, do you think that that is subject to changes? A lot of restaurants are saying they're not going to reopen the inside, that they're going to stay with drive-through? Is that going to possibly impact that where we need to be thinking a little?
It's a great question. I know some have also the, the pickup service where you can just pull into a parking space. I think we need to keep an eye on that one, depending on what happens in the future. I sure hope there's the ability to go back and sit down at some point because I enjoy that. But I think right now we have, eight's a pretty, pretty high number for most of those drive-through restaurants. I think we can keep an eye on that. I think for now, we'd probably like to just kind of monitor that though. That, if that answers that question. But I think it's a good question and it'll be interesting to see how that plays out. Backwards, I think, or maybe we have that slide twice. One other just brief thing is we've proposed structured parking standards as far as architectural standards to try to get something that looks a little bit more like that and a little bit less like that. Here's those standards, just real briefly, I won't go through all of them, but ground-based elements, variation materials, ground floor windows or things that look like windows and not just tack-on windows, but something that actually looks like a window. Some smart monitoring systems, things that help people know how many spaces are in the, that are available inside the, the structure. So there's a number of things that help with those parking structures and help them to have a little bit better appearance. One thing I will mention is that we also want to encourage people to wrap their parking where they can so that you actually have active space along the street rather than just parking right there along that street. So that, you know, in the case of this building on the, on the left here, that's, you could potentially have storefront along there with parking wrapped behind. Didn't plan on talking about that too long unless you'd like to. The one thing that's not in our code right now that we've relied on the building code for years is ADA parking standards. We've added those to our parking code so that we have very clear standards available. We found that a lot of the architects and things go to our code before the building code to find those standards. And really they're, they're pretty consistent across cities, but this, this just puts them in our code. And then just, just to wrap up, we have taken our RV parking standards out of our RV section. We have an RV park section of our code that gives recreational vehicle standards for recreational vehicle parks. For whatever reason, they decided to put the standards for parking one of these in a, in a single family zone in that section of code. We pulled that out, put it in this parking section of code and then made some clarifications about where those vehicles can be parked. That's in that code. There's a minimum setback required. There are locations in the lot where they are allowed. And they, we can go through that if you'd like, or, or if you want to read that code on your own time and we'd be happy to answer any questions about that. So our next steps, we'd like to, we'd like to propose coming back to you with, we could come back with another work session before that hearing. We'd like to hold a public hearing on September 3rd to potentially adopt these standards. Of course, if you have additional questions at that time and, and need more time to look at it, we'll, we'll respect that as well. But we would like to move this along simply because for one thing, it will help with some of the challenges we've had with business license administration. And secondly, we do have some developments that are pending that, that would like to see what the outcome of this ordinance is to see how they'll move forward. So again, that's our proposed schedule. Are there any questions that I can ask, answer for you? And hopefully I left the chief enough, enough time.
Not a question, Chad, but I, I'm going to make a comment that I made at the planning commission. Cause I sat through all of these at the planning commission and I think you guys are, have done a great job. And, but I still think the one area that's missing is the industrial. And I brought up the example of Smiths and the staging of the semis and the problem that is on Sugar Street. And I really think that needs to be addressed here. Because we talk about all of the drive-ins not having, you know, going out on the streets and having enough to stack their customers. It's a nightly occurrence almost on Sugar Street. And so I know you gave a little explanation of that at the planning commission, but I think it really needs to be involved in this.
We'll come back with some, I want to again, leave the chief some time, but I'll come back with, with some materials prepared on that discussion. We've had a little bit more, even after our planning commission hearing, we had some emails from our planning commissioners related to that. And I can give you some of their feedback on that as well. I think it's a good issue. It's, it's an interesting issue because some of the semi-parking, as we mentioned, the planning commission out on those streets are people that are not associated with those businesses. They just have, they have rigs that they drive for their business or for their occupation. And we have very few streets in the city where you can park overnight one of those vehicles. And, and what I found from some of our planning commission correspondences, there are some stacking situations like you're talking about in the street. Not to go into that in too much depth, but on that Smiths, the Kroger site especially, it looks like it might be a operational changes that need to be made. We've got a lot of space on those sites. They've, they've accounted for a lot of trucks. So it might just be a matter of saying, hey, we need to work with you and not have you idling these trucks out there waiting. When, when I was out there looking at the issue, I did note that the ones that were there were, were in approved parking locations. So they weren't parking in the, the red stripes. They were there, but they were in places where it was allowed to have parking. So I think it's a good issue and I'll come prepared next time to talk.
Yeah. And I, I don't know when you guys went out there, but I see it almost, almost daily when I'm out there. And it affects, it affects the other businesses. Cause they're parking in Randall's, they're parking at Fred's Marine. And if you haven't been out there at night, you won't see that. And the biggest, the biggest problem is, is I, I don't even have a problem with them parking on the red curb as much as I have a problem with them parking in the middle of the street and blocking the lane. That's what the problem is.
And some of that is not related to off-street parking as much as it is enforcement on our, our, our on-street parking regulations and making sure that those are being met. But I'll be.
Just come back with what you have.
Come prepared to talk about that next time. Yep. Anything else before I turn some time over to the, to the chief here? Thank you. And if you have questions as you read through the ordinance, let us know.
You guys are going to need a break. You're up. Just know that some of us will need a quick break.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Alex asked me to give you a brief update on where we are with Fire Station Four right now. We have been meeting with our selected architect, think Architecture. We've had several site meetings with them out at our location out of 89 and Cherry, just south of Cherry. I have passed out some, just some kind of update on the elevation. It's, the picture's a little bit darker than the ones originally. We had a little issue with our, our printer there, but the colors are going to be slightly different than that. But it, it gives you a little bit of an idea. We finalized pretty much the plan with the architect. We've had our engineers come out, several, we've met with several of the, the different engineers with the architecture firm as well as our, our staff engineers here at the city to, to work out the, the site plan, which you also have a copy of there. That has just a slight variation on it as well. Our engineer, engineers have asked us to try align the, the front apron where the engines come out and align that with the water tanks driveway. So that's what we're going to be working on. And so there'll be just slightly, just a slight adjustment. That's, that's pretty well how it's going to look. We did work out a 30-foot easement that we've got from UDOT that's going to allow us to have a little bit better location on that site. So that's going to be able to, to allow us to move it just slightly south and give us, and put us a little bit more on the crest of the hill if you've driven down on that, on that street down there. So that's going to work out very well. So with that being said, so where are we at right now? Well, we're just about done with the, with the architects in terms of just finalizing all of the, the plans so that we can move forward. And we anticipate being able to go out to bid for both a, a project manager and the construction company the week of, of the 31st of this, of this month. So that's where we're at. And then it'll go out on the state procurement site for 30 days. And then we'll review the bids that we get back and get with our, with our architects and review it in-house and, and work with the, the architects as well as reviewing those bids. And so we would hope to come back to you, take this back to you in council, in a council meeting, so that we can try to start to, to plan to break ground, maybe the end of October, November is when the groundbreaking would occur. And that's about a, a one-year construction cost. Of course, the station, the, the construction of the station was already approved in the budget. So we're ready to go. We, we feel real confident that we've had good planning on this. We've set adequate funding aside. We'll see how the bids come back, but we're feeling really good about that right now. So.
Wait.
If you can, any questions you might have on that? We're real excited to move forward on it.
Just one quick question here. So the photo with Mr. Morris in it, I'm going to, the third page in, is that the view that's going to be facing 89?
I believe the picture you're referring to is where it's, it's.
That's with air.
That's actually the, the, going to be facing the, the frontage road.
Okay.
This is, that's, that'll basically be the front entrance to the station.
So the bays will be facing 89 then?
Well, no, the bays will, the bays will pull out onto Valley, onto Valley View, East Side Drive, Valley View, whatever name we're going to end up calling it. So, and that, that location is great because when you pull out of there, as I'm sure you're aware, Cherry Lane is going to be closed, but we'll be just north of the Gordon Interchange. And that's going to work out extremely well for us to be able to have access both along the frontage roads to go, to go north, to go back to, to, to turn right and go on to the Gordon Interchange to take us back into town if we need to, to get on to 89 to go north or, or south. So that'll work out really well. So the, the station does face, the main part of the station does face east. So we're going to, we're trying to be creative on what we can do in terms of minimizing the, the snow and ice buildup that we'd have in front of the station on the upper space. So we're looking at some creative ways to, to deal with that. Well, there, there's some potential to use some geothermal type systems to try to keep that, to keep the ice and then build it down. So.
So Chief, if you're thinking of breaking ground the end of October and it's a yearish, is the road system going to be up there where you can utilize?
They, they, UDOT's assured us that we'll continue to have access. They will not close off Cherry, which would be the main road out of there until they're ready to have the Gordon Interchange open. And, and we've talked with UDOT and actually the, the Gordon Interchange is, is probably the furthest along of any of the scope of all of the 89 project right now, just because they were able to get the, the land acquisition and easements and everything. They said that's actually far ahead of the rest of the project. So if that 89 interchange goes in, we're going to be in that, that, excuse me, the Gordon 89 interchange goes in, that's going to put us in a real good position there. So we're, they, they have guaranteed us that they'll, they, they understand what's going in there. So we're working with them on that. We've already done a little bit of site work on that too, to kind of get it buildable.
Anything else?
All right.
Yeah. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. This is exciting news.
Appreciate it. Exciting time. So.
It is.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah. We'll have to figure, we'll have to, it'll be a small ceremony. Well, we'll see how the restrictions are in, coming up in November. So.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay. Counsel, we'll take a two-minute hopefully break. We'll be right back. City council meeting for August 20th, 2020, starting at 7:02 PM. Like to call this meeting to order. And what are you laughing at?
Oh, I just read something funny. That was.
Okay.
Want me to read it to you?
No, not yet.
Funny.
Anyway, I'll call this meeting to order. And as tradition, we'd like to start it out with our prayer and pledge. Our opening ceremony tonight will be conducted by Council Member Dave.
Okay. I'd like to invite everybody to stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. After which we'll have Council Member Dave Thomas offer the invocation. I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
My Father in heaven, as we come before thee at this council meeting, we ask that thy Spirit may attend us. We ask is the things which we discuss, the things which we think, and the things which we feel strongly about that we will voice our opinion, but also keep in mind that this is for the good of Leyton, for the good of many and not to good of one or some. We pray that at this time, that thou will watch over those who need help, for those that need assistance, that we might be able to find them, that someone might be able to find them and help them. In this time, which is very troubling, we pray for a spirit to guide, a spirit to lead, that people may feel comfortable and know that the best is being done for their good. We thank thee for this great and wonderful land. In this, I say in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Day.
Do you want me to say it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. That's kind of like.
You can, you can wait for your municipal events. How's that?
I ain't waiting for anything. I've lived my whole life.
Okay. Let's go ahead and we only have one set of minutes. So I'm looking for a motion to adopt the minutes from July 16th, 2020 of a council meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. I'll move on to municipal events. Mr. Thomas, I understand you have something you want to share with us.
I don't get these too often because I don't read Facebook, but my wife gave this to me and I, I haven't quit laughing. So if you'll, whatever you want to call it, whether this is the right time to do it or not, tough. Says three surgeons are discussing who makes the best patients to operate on. First surgeon said electricians. Everything is color-coded. Second surgeon said, no, librarians. Everything's in alphabetical order. Third surgeon kind of shut them up when he said, you're all wrong. Politicians are the easiest to operate on. There's no guts, no heart, no brains and no spine. Plus the head and rear end are My wife. Anyway, like it, lump it. I'm sorry if I offended, tough.
Okay. Do you have any municipal events you want to discuss?
No.
Okay. Does anybody else have a municipal event? Council Member Fitzpatrick, do you want to share yours?
Yeah. So before I do it, I just want to give a kudos to the Davis Arts Council. I attended the Vocalocity concert Sunday a week ago and they did an amazing job making sure everybody stayed safe through that event. So thanks to them. Hopefully, I'll, this will be the last time I bring this up, but the census. And the reason why I'm bringing it up again tonight is Governor Herbert in his address today felt impressed to also talk about it. Utah has only 68% of the Utahns have completed the census, but Leyton is, is higher than that. that, but we still aren't at 100%. We do have a little bit of time still left to complete these. There is still the door-to-door going on, but you can go to my2020census.gov if you've not already done that. And it takes seriously just a minute or two to fill it out. And it is so important that this get done because it will help with our political representation and how much federal funding we receive for education, infrastructure, healthcare, and other things. So this census is a really important and people, in my mind, it's as important to do this as it is to get out and vote, that this is, should be one of our civic responsibilities that we do. So please, if you have not done it, to do it.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Tom, do you have anything?
Go ahead.
Go, go ahead.
Yeah, so Davis Arts Council had a, a loss felt. Diane Campbell, her and her husband had been serving in some capacity with Davis Arts Council for the last 17 years, and she passed away this week. And so we just wanted to, to mention that as an announcement that, and Dave, I know, knew her much better than I did, and grateful for all of her, her service to the community and to the Davis Arts Council. And we wish her and her family are in the city's thoughts and prayers. And that kind of volunteer service, it, it lasts. People remember it because you're, you're giving of your time and your, your talents and you're doing it because you love something and because you want to serve the community. And can't think of few things that can be better said about a person than what they do with their free time, especially if it's in the service of others. So we just want to pass along those condolences to Diane's family.
Since you're the liaison, why don't you go ahead and announce the movies as well?
So they're, they're doing a, pull it up here. Tomorrow at 5:00 PM at the Ed Kenley Amphitheater, they'll have Coco will be shown. You can find tickets at, tickets at davidsarts.org. It's a nice little show. My kids like that one. And then at 8:00 PM, there's a double feature, so the one that follows Coco is That Thing You Do with Tom Hanks. So it's a good way to get out and about on a Friday evening and experience what Davis Arts Council has to offer.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I'll, I'll be there volunteering as well, so.
And then the last thing was just the announcement, just on the Gentile Street Bridge status. So if people are tuning in and are unaware, the hope was that we were going to have that bridge deck completed before school started so that they could get to school easier across the bridge, but it doesn't look like that's going to be the, the case. And so it's now set to open September 18th. And Layton City, I believe, is going to be sending out some social media based on kind of giving more instructions about what that might look like and how that will go. And mid-September, they're going to be removing and replacing the deck of the bridge, and this work will extend the lifespan of the structure and enhance mobility. And I know it's going to be, it's, will help because it's, it's tough to get around town with, with, without Gentile Bridge onboard. So we're almost there. They're detouring people, detouring folks to Layton Parkway and then back onto Gentile through Fort Lane or Main. So hopefully we'll get to the end of that, but the end is in sight on that, and they've been working nonstop trying to get that taken care of.
Thank you. Did you have anything?
Madam Mayor, could I just, just wanted to add from Diane Campbell passing away that Terry Cowan.
Her daughter.
Her daughter is a member of the staff of the Arts Council of Community Engagement, who's, who's just amazing, and she has worked her heart out for the, for the council as well. And so just condolences to, to her specifically as someone who's really given her all to, to this community.
Well, and her dad also volunteered alongside with her, her mother as well, so that's a, that's a double win. Well, hopefully he'll continue. We, we need to see his face as well. Okay, one other announcement that took place today, and I know Councilmember Fitzpatrick was there, and we had a new school ribbon cutting out at Sunburst Elementary, which is on the west side. It's in the, the Dibble property, or you can see it to be south of Gentile, just, I don't know, probably what, about 2,400, 2,500 West area? So we want to congratulate the school district on their latest opening. And, you know, it was a, it was a fun event. I enjoyed hearing, seeing the little children that they had involved. They had a great program. And in fact, Don's granddaughter, right, was able to, to speak, so.
Well, and there were two, two really interesting facts about this school that I thought. This is the last school that will be built on the five-year bond that was passed five years ago. And also that this is the largest physical space of an elementary school in Davis County. This school's pretty big. It's a really neat school.
And it opened up in our centennial year, so we appreciate that. Okay.
Is this our centennial year or is it next year?
We're gonna, we're, we'll continue as long as we need to, right?
Yeah, what's a year?
Yeah, give or take. Okay, council, we'll move on here. We're on to item number three, which is any type of verbal petitions or presentations. Seeing that there's none there, I'll move on to citizens' comments. We have a huge audience tonight, so I'm not sure we'll have anybody attend the podium. However, we do have access online, and I think at this point, we have not had any comments. So we'll see if any of those come in. But now, we'll move on to item number five, which is our consent items. Hey, maybe that's a lesson. Okay, so let's go ahead and start with our consent items. Our first two items are going to be presented by our city attorney, Gary Crane. So choose a mic, any mic. Step up to the mic. Make sure you're speaking the mic.
The unveiling.
Yeah, the de-masking.
Attorney, there you go. Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. The first item in the consent agenda is Resolution 20-51. As you know, we have a fantastic building, RC Willy, the RC Willy Building, that has just opened its doors and in fact has been open, how time flies, but over 30 days. There are certain things that kicked in, certain incentives that kicked in for RC Willy when we hit that point where they'd been open for 30 days, certain obligations that they have on a continuing basis. But two of those obligations that we had when they were open for 30 days was, one, they have a warranty deed for a piece of property that was conveyed to the city by UDOT. It's just a remnant parcel along that road, along the frontage road. And the city received that property from the Utah Department of Transportation just as a remnant parcel. And as part of the incentives for RC Willy, the city agreed to convey that to RC Willy. It's about an acre in, in size. And so we went ahead and we did that, but we did it with a reversion indicating that if they never opened up, it would revert back to the city. The deed would revert back to the city. Well, the attorney for RC Willy asked that we remove that reversion because they've now met the terms of, and conditions of that agreement, and they've been in business for at least 30 days. And I'm sure, looking at the size and beauty of that building, it's going to be here for a long time. So we were not too concerned about releasing that. Then the second item was another piece of property that also belonged to UDOT that we actually lease from UDOT. And so they use that for parking. They use that in addition to the piece that we warranted to them for parking. And so the attorney asked if we would put together just what they call a duplicate lease, a sublease. The sublease for the property would, it mirrors the original lease that we have with the Utah Department of Transportation. So if that expires, their lease on the, on the parking would expire. But we don't anticipate that it would. They, UDOT could not convey that parcel to us because of the conditions upon which it was purchased, but they could lease it to us, and that's what they did. And now we're subleasing it to RC Willy. And so that's the two items that are covered by that first resolution, 20-51. Are there any questions that I can answer for any of you on those two?
So the, the city still has the lease, they just sublease it to them.
That's correct.
It doesn't remove the city out of that.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? I guess you can move on.
Second one's just about as easy, a little more complicated perhaps, but as you drive east or west, excuse me, on Layton Parkway, just after you go over the highway, you see some development going on on the right-hand side, right? Tanner Clinic and IHC is developing the property, and Tanner Clinic will be a tenant on that property. And one of the incentives for Tanner coming into town and locating on that property was there was a strip of property right in conjunction with the Layton Parkway that was conveyed to the city as part of just about 11 acres of road that UDOT conveyed to the city after it had completed it in conjunction with that, that overpass. It then became City Road, and there was a remnant parcel that was abutting the IHC piece. That remnant parcel, as part of a deal with, with IHC and with Tanner, was actually conveyed or was agreed to be conveyed to them so that they could use it for parking or for putting building on or whatever they wanted to do with that piece. It was of no use to the city or little use to the city, and so the city thought it was fine to go ahead and make that trade. We traded for their relocating a water line into the right-of-way. And that, the costs were about roughly equivalent. I mean, you know, a couple of years, it's 2016 that the deal was struck, but a couple of years later, the property's a little more expensive than that, than what it cost to remove the water line. But essentially it was a, a trade. Well, what ended up in happening was UDOT had a reversion clause in the entire 11 acres, just a standard reversion clause, which is one of those little interests in, in land that if you don't get rid of it, UDOT can take the property back. And so we scrambled, we scrambled in negotiating with the IHC and with Tanner. And I didn't hold them up at all because their, their approvals were already given and they, they can still do the groundwork and everything that they were able to do. But we, we were able to negotiate, renegotiate that with both Tanner and IHC. And the long and the short of it is Tanner's going to pick up, Tanner and IHC are going to pick up about $90,000 of the cost of removing that, that reconveyance that UDOT had, and the city will pick up about $20,000. And that's as a result of a, I think, a very favorable appraisal we got from Mr. John Lang. And it's an accurate appraisal because it, it does have a lot, they do have a lot of utilities and that type of thing in that right-of-way. But we thought it was, it was a good resolution. So we're replacing the prior exchange agreement with a new agreement that provides essentially that they pay for now that, that parcel of property, but for about $20,000, which the city would, would cover. So that's pretty much it. And with that, I think everything's, looks like it's moving forward over there. It, it's, we're excited to see it go up, and it'll be a beautiful building. The renderings are beautiful and, and the location is ideal. It will really stir that area, we think. So that's pretty much what that next resolution does, which is Resolution 20-53, is it authorizes that replacement of that original exchange agreement. Are there any questions that I can answer on that one for you?
Yeah, is that the only thing going in right now? Is Tanner?
Tanner, and there, there's a road going in right now, which will lead to the multifamily at the back. But I don't believe they've begun construction on that. I, I, I think that's still.
They're digging it. They're even going farther down.
Yeah, they're doing the, they're doing all the utility work right now. Yeah, getting all the utilities in, but I, I haven't seen any foundation work yet, Dave, so.
Senior Center had been approved there.
Yes.
On that west end. What's that? Senior Living Center. Oh, really? Okay.
Yes.
So when will it be done? Because I got a, I got a timeline here.
Is that before or after the doctor visit? Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. We appreciate that. Okay, we'll move on to item number C and D, which again, both of those items will be presented by Mr. Terry Colburn. And I'll let him address this regarding Kroger and it looks like, what, transportation agreement, so, or UDOT, UDOT I should say, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Bring before the council Resolution 2052, letter of agreement between Layton City and the Kroger Company regarding, regarding the handling of an existing 12-inch culinary water line approximately 500 North Sugar Street. Layton City owns and maintains a 12-inch water line at approximately 200, 275 North that runs east and west between Sugar Street and 750 West and is part of the city's culinary water system. The aforementioned water line runs directly through the Kroger Company's plant. The city's water system network outside of the Kroger plant has expanded such that this 12-inch water line is no longer necessary to supply sufficient fire flow to the surrounding local area. Kroger desires to assume ownership and responsibility for the future care and maintenance of this water line between new 12-inch octave water meters to be installed at or near the west and east property boundaries. And in addition to the portion of the, the water line between the new meters, Kroger desires for the existing interior meters to be privately owned and maintained by Kroger as well. Kroger will purchase the new 12-inch meters and the city will install them as well as own and maintain them, just the meters. The city will purchase and install the various items associated with the 12-inch meters, including vaults and backflow devices. Kroger will own, maintain the new backflow devices and vaults, including any existing devices, vaults, or items within their facility. Staff recommends council adopt Resolution 2052.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this particular item? Seeing that there's none, go ahead and proceed on to item D.
Bring before the council Resolution 2054, a third-party relocation agreement between UDOT and Layton City for the relocation of sewer facilities in the Antelope Drive area of the US 89 project, approximately 2,800 North along Highway 89. UDOT is engaged in constructing the highway construction project identified as US 89 Farmington to I-84 in Davison, Weber Counties, Utah. UDOT has awarded a contract for the project, and the design bill contractor will design and administer construction of the project. Layton City owns and maintains existing water and sewer facilities within the roadways at various locations within the scope of the project. UDOT's project construction necessitates relocating, adjusting, betterment, or protection a portion of the city's sewer facilities in relation to the project. The city has requested betterments to the sewer system consisting of the installation of an 18-inch steel casing identified as Solution S2206 in this agreement. The cost to the city for the betterment is $188,288.10. Staff would recommend the council adopt Resolution 2054, and I would note that I'll be bringing a payback agreement on that at a later date.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Terry, so last meeting, we did an agreement with them for water line.
Correct.
But the sewer wasn't mentioned. Is this that sewer that was in that project mentioned before?
I can't, I'd have to look.
Okay.
I remember it was the water last time.
Yeah, they mentioned.
That was at Gordon Avenue.
Oh, okay.
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 And then this sewer is at Antelope Drive and 89.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry. Back to the Kroger water line?
Uh huh.
Why do they want to own? Why do they wanna own the water line?
Because there's meters in there and lines that are run to their facilities.
Their facility?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And it's been a pain in our rear end for the last few years to go in and repair leaks and stuff. It's an older line. It's not worth anything to us. Matter of fact, it actually enhances our system to let them have that.
Unusual. That's good.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time presenting. Okay, Council, that brings us to a close, actually. But we're gonna need to have a motion made on our consent items. So I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion on our consented items for tonight, that we, um, adopt Resolution twenty fifty-one, approving documents related to the opening of the R.C. Willey's Home Furnishing Store. Resolution twenty fifty-three, adopting and approving the agreement replacing in its entirety the exchange agreement between Layton City and Medical Building LLC. Resolution twenty fifty-two, a letter of agreement between Layton City and Kroger regarding the handling of an existing twelve-inch culinary water line. And Resolution twenty fifty-four, approving a third-party relocation agreement between UDOT and Layton City for the relocation of sewer facilities at the Antelope Drive area of the US eighty-nine.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sure there's no nays there. So, that, all those consent items have been approved. And like I said, there's, uh, looking at the rest of our agenda. We don't have a public hearing. No one finished business. So I could entertain a motion too.
So moved.
Close the meeting.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Thank you very much. We appreciate everybody attending online. Oh, I, a better, wait, I forgot to verify. Was there any comments online? Sorry.
There was one that we actually, um, it was actually more for chat.
Okay.
It was just asking that the city council liked closed areas in the parking lot, make sure they're well-lit, because five hundred feet's a long way to walk in the lot, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and usually in the, in the work meeting, you don't take comments anyway. So what we decided to send that on to the chat, he'll respond to it.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you all. I appreciate it. And again, thank you for attending online.
You're welcome.